Okay, it's Wednesday, Jan- not January seventeen, February seven.
Oh yeah, it is.
It's Wednesday, February seven, twenty twenty-three, it's four o'clock, we're gonna start the
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
We're in a roll here.
I know, I guess I've been
Happy New Year, everybody. Start the Sanginville Select Board meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, is this the actual agenda that I should be using?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Approval of the minutes, Select Board Meeting one three twenty twenty-four and Select Board Meeting one seventeen twenty twenty-four.
Make motion to approve A and B.
Second. All in favor, we're all in favor. Review, review of treasurer's warrants, payroll, six, seven, eight, and accounts payable, nine.
Make a motion, prove A and B's read.
Second.
All in favor, we're all three in favor. Uh, open session. No guests other than Matt.
I'd like to call, if we may, an executive session. Do you have the number?
I do have the number.
I, I usually do.
One M R S A four oh five A. It's four oh one, and we're going into executive session. Alright, it's uh, four thirty-five, and uh, we're, we're back in section, and we do have an action.
So, um, I will be given my formal resignation, I'll write it up and have it to you tomorrow. Uh, my last day will be April twenty-sixth, so uh, that gives me, you know, almost three months to help work on the transition in going uh, forward, uh, in finding a, a new town manager. I've been, I've accepted and been offered a position from the Army, um, with doing what I was doing when I left. And as far as salary goes, I can't pass up that opportunity to move forward in the civilian career with the Army, so that's, that's why.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
And so you, and you agree to serve as interim while we start our search?
Absolutely, and I am, and I'll make sure that, you know, all the programs that I've been handling and the things that need to be done before and after the town meeting are taken care of, and, you know, everything's set up and all the contracts will be in place before Paul.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and again, congratulations.
Motion to approve, second.
Oh yeah.
Vote.
Yep, well, motion to accept Patrick's resignation.
Resignation, uh, second.
All in favor, we're all three in favor. Um, on to old business, Gould Property.
So Gould Property is the, the foreclosed one that we actually just closed the foreclosure process on, we have four bids, sealed bids. Uh, we did have to get an Orkin, uh, contract to come in and, and take care of some items. Uh, but I did go into statute and we can, uh, since that was something we had to do and it's an abandoned building, the property owner still liable to pay us back.
Yep.
Yeah, so if you, you want the four bids, oh, that one's not, that one's
So, okay.
Hand them around a little.
Yeah. I have three bids.
There's three? Oh, that, I was counting this one, sorry, this is for you, but it's from the Minnesota's. Valley Grange, Valley Grange.
Oh. Alright, so.
Hold it.
So how do we do?
Thank you.
Here, let's, let you organize them all, and you know, in the future, Patrick, you can just open those.
Yeah, you can open them.
Alright, there you go, they're in the order.
Oh, okay, so I just say the winner, right?
Yeah, that's all that really matters.
So the
Highest.
The highest bidder is Nicholas Chambers, um, and the bid was five thousand dollars. And I would make a motion to approve the five thousand dollars from Nicholas Chambers.
Second.
All in favor, we're all three in favor, what was the amount due to the two entities, us and the sanitation?
Was it twenty-six hundred?
Twenty-six hundred, but we need to minus out of that five thousand, the twenty-six hundred and whatever the Orkin contract is to take care of the
The issue.
But we're still net ahead.
Right, so then
The owner gets the
He'll get whatever's left over after we kill
Yep.
infestation.
Okay. Um, old business, item B, policy updates.
So, working on the personnel policy, uh, I sent that to you last week for revision, for some of it is uh, municipal volunteer, uh, and stipends, but also in there, there's, that was not that I wanted to see us put in um, for the next one is background checks and investigations. We have a background check and investigations form, we just don't have it in the personnel policy, so I, I just wanna make sure that that's put in there. And then I want to highlight, uh, substance, drug and substance abuse within alcohol abuse policy, that's in there, that's stated in there. Um, but I don't think we've really followed any if we need to, so in the future, I would like to see us trying to enact some random testing or testing.
But in theory, you already would have the authority to do that if you wanted.
Right, I just wanna highlight it.
It's more of a procedural thing, yeah.
Right, right.
It'd be, well, honestly, it'd be nice to, I know it's random and bloody, bloody, blah, but it'd be nice to say that we're gonna do, because it's gonna be a cost also, but you could say, we're gonna do whatever, five every two months, or three months, or six months, or whatever you're, then that way there it'd be easier to forget about.
That includes the three in my office and any other of the employees, so. Uh, also with that policy, uh, well, I'll go to new business with this, the town office and rent, and I talked to Lee yesterday. Uh, he indicated that he can get thirteen hundred for upstairs, that would put us at twenty-six, and he's willing to come down, you know, a hundred dollars or so, um, and I told him that I would, I would bring it up to the board and we would discuss having upstairs. I mean, there's some advantages to it, but I'm not sure if there's advantages to
Twelve hundred dollars.
Twelve hundred dollars a month. Uh, can, can I do something else with a thousand dollars?
Yeah, I mean, we asked you, you were kinda lukewarm on whether you even needed it.
Yeah, I, no, no, if we're keeping records, then let's find a different repository for, for records. Um, you know, yeah, if it's upstairs here in the firehouse, or, you know, a container of some sort, you know, weatherproof, you know, one of those pack rats or whatever they are, it would be better served for a thousand dollars for
Yeah, yeah.
pods, and, and even if we, or, the newts, uh, pay, pay the oil bill for the public works to be on, but if we're storing records in there, I'm not sure how we, how we compensate the, the heat and oil, and then we utilize that office that's in there to store some of it instead.
Yeah, we could probably just, I mean, we could trash that out and put some shelving units in there or something, and organize that that way too, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah.
No, I was thinking, if, if I were in your position, it would be more like an office for
Yeah, we were, we were really thinking that
Not so much more documented.
an office.
Yeah, no, I, yeah.
Right, so I think at this point, we'll just, we'll forego the upstairs.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, oh yeah, we need to sign it, so, um, and stick to the, so did we get our rent contract for the, for the
Yeah, I, I gotta talk to him tomorrow, and
Okay.
He's probably waiting for this decision.
Oh, oh, sure, okay, yep, so we're gonna, going to
Give you what you're
What?
I said he was probably waiting to give it until he knew what we were gonna do, so he would make it the right one.
Sorry, I feel like I'm missing something, but, oh yeah, there we go.
Uh, okay, yep, new business, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five plowing contract.
Uh, I sent those out, uh, last week, mailed them out to five entities, uh, for bid, and with a March first, um, submission, so that when we go roll into budget year, we already know how much, how long the contract's gonna take, and then, uh, I'm gonna do a projection of of salt, sand, and after, and, and I'll probably allocate the same amount that we did for budget this past year, and then expend that and have it put up, you know, over the summer.
Do we need to sign this?
Uh, we do, yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay, okay.
Um, then we have the broadband over
Oh yeah.
premium over on Town House, they got a stake, they've already talked to, uh, the, the landowner, but since we own that easement, they wanna put another junction box like we did over here, uh, and they wanted to just know if we can give approval, it's no cost to us, nothing like that, and they've already got an approval letter from the landowner and accepting, so, uh, items.
You mean, is it past like the end of the road, is that where your sign was?
So you know where
Our sign is?
No, it's the, it's that piece of property, the pie shade right there, right, in front of
I thought we saw most of that.
We did.
No, we, we own the right of way, because it's off of the road
Wait a minute.
within our, with our, our, our mains.
You're saying on Town House, right?
Yeah, where it goes from the main road
Yeah.
and then Silver's Mills, and then Town House, that piece of pie.
That, that all sorts of
That triangle, that's all cut out, yeah.
We don't own that.
We own the right of way of the ditch.
Oh, where they, and they wanna
That's where they wanna put it, it was on, just right on that, on the line with the landowner owns and we, our right of way.
Hmm, well, it'd be nice if they moved it back so it's known in our right of way, so in case you wanna do some ditching or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see.
I can make sure, and I, I can go measure it.
Or just look at it, depending on which part of it, if it's in the flat, I guess it's not that big of a deal, but
And, and the landowner already agrees, and it, and it, and I'll measure it tomorrow, it might not even be in there, but they, the, the premium just wanted to go through the process and have the
So it's actually, okay, so it's in the dirt piece?
Yeah. It's right by the telephone pole.
You probably measure it, we're probably
Pissed on it, just the inside of it.
Well, we're pretty wide now through there.
Yeah.
So we probably already maximized our easement right now. Yeah, that's what I've, you know what I mean?
Sure.
Because it has Priorities.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll let them know that we're, we're good and it's not, no, no cost to us. Uh, annual town meeting, I was looking at April sixth, the first, what's that, the first full week, the Saturday of, um, if we feel like we can have the budget done and all the warrants written and
It's more about, uh, the clerk and her audit, remember that was the issue because of the date of that?
Yeah.
That was the issue.
Um
Everything else will be more than ready by then.
I would, I, I would, I'll, I'll find out for Michelle when that is gonna be, I would definitely like to make sure that it's done uh, before my last day.
Good.
Uh, is what I would really be in hopes for, so that there's no lagging stress and issues taking place, which would, it, the sixth or the thirteenth, it's like, would be
Do we have preference, sixth or the thirteenth?
No, I think as soon as it works.
Right, okay, okay, I get you.
I'll talk to Michelle and we'll make sure that she's covered and the audit takes place, and that's the important piece.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, so, our animal control officer had to give us his resignation um, for, for some health reasons. I got his letter.
Do, do we have someone else?
So we, we called Joe.
Pat?
Yeah, and he can anyhow, so, uh, I guess, by statute, tag on Matt until I appoint somebody.
Tag on you.
Yeah.
I, I We've had somebody else in the past, remember there was a time when he was, he had
Sick or
He was sick or something?
Somebody else was filling in for, or, a neighboring town had
Yeah, it was in an adjacent town.
It was Lois's
Oh.
Yeah.
Other.
Significant, her partner?
Yes, I, I'm blank, I cannot remember.
Chris.
Chris.
I was gonna say, I can picture him, but yes, that is somebody.
And he has the same name as the sheriff, right, what's his last name? Uh, yeah, was, I don't even think they're related, but he had the same last name.
As a sheriff, that, not, not, no.
No. Well, so I know, so Sam, Sam and Michelle have been calling to, to find out, and get somebody and get somebody in.
But I know he's, he's helped us out in the past, that's all, not saying he's available or anything like that.
Sure.
But he might be, and he's local, so.
Uh, I skipped over one, Mema FEMA, I sent, sent you the email indicating we met the threshold, I got your email about over here, so
That, that looked, Tony, that's
That's unbelievable.
That is really progress.
And you know where, and the reason why I was kind of specific is I wanna make sure you knew exactly where I was talking about.
So
There are live pine trees in the water now.
So the punch list of priorities is gonna be that for sure, and then the cemetery and the headstones, and getting that taken care of, and then, we, they already did measurements and stuff on the roads, but when the, so FEMA will do a second visit with us, and those are gonna be the priorities to make sure they target the cemeteries.
I'm not even sure of a firm you would reach out to for a cost of, for that.
I can't imagine.
Brian should be able to do that.
Yeah, it would have to be, uh, Corps of Engineers, or, or Howard, or, or
Howard could do that, I believe.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, we'll reach out to Brian just to, cause you're gonna have to have a number, right?
Get the wheels rolling.
Do you have to come up with?
They come up with it, the FEMA comes up with it, so they would actually have to probably go through the Corps of Engineers to, to get established. So this is where the whole process gets more in-depth of, of figures and numbers and actual quotes and stuff, so.
Uh, other than, other than, everything from Scotts County, other than municipalities, get kicked out.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that, interesting.
Uh,
Huh?
One thing that's not, so there's three other things that aren't on the agenda that came in in the last, uh, couple days. Uh, one of them I already sent you, which was the Department of Labor, um, report on, on our fine. Um, there has been corrective action taken on, on training and records keeping, and, uh, the way going forward, I tried to get it reduced, they just wouldn't do it, so, that's shocker.
You have any theories for that?
Good try, yeah.
Yeah, uh, Valley Grange.
Just say yes, sir, and write the check.
Right, uh, it, you know, it's fourteen hundred and
Yes.
But the, more importantly, uh, was the corrective action taken place on record keeping and
So the only thing that I wanna just say with that, and we've talked about this before as far as with the fire department, because it is volunteer, and it's punky, and it's hard for everything, um, and we've talked in the past, so like, all employee documents, that's supposed to be in the town office.
Yeah.
All purchasing, that's supposed to go through a PO system through, and all this stuff is, you know, just to help them, because to make things easier. So, even like this type of thing, should this be moved over to the town office and let them maintain it?
So that's, uh, I've talked about and said, all the records will be in the town office, right? So we, I put a firm on that. Then, uh, as far as budgeting goes, I, you know, it's, I know to get away from the cookie jars, but I'm thinking that there needs to be something in there for training somehow that we can, at the bottom line is, it, and Matt has fixed it, is the training and how it's kept and the record keeping and who's done it. So they went and cut some of the trees down to clean up from the last storm, right, that was their chainsaw training. He's already kind of taken in.
Sure, but I think that's what I'm trying to say, though, if you move this over to the town office, where you have more, you have an employee that's gonna be there.
Yeah.
Whereas if you leave all this stuff at the fire department, it's volunteer, people come, people go.
Right.
And I think that's part of the problem.
I do too.
You know, you've had people that might have done a really good job, and they moved along, and the next person doesn't
The records need continuity, you can't be ended up and out.
Yeah, that's, that's what happened with this, is there was a lack of continuity, so we, we
So if we just move it all to the town office and, I think it would be better.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and then you, you know, however you wanna maintain it all, it's easier to keep there.
And that was a conversation we had last week, on almost everything else. Um, is, I don't know what that is, Tony.
Yeah, it's just a letter from the Valley Grange, which is in Guilford.
Yep.
Um, and, um, to us, friends and neighbors, um, and our hall is available at no charge to local community groups. Um, they sponsor our home world programs and projects throughout the year. Um, like many, we're slowly working our way back from the pandemic as far as finish our efforts to support our community. Um, it's basically, uh, so, uh, we respectfully ask that local citizens consider, consider providing Valley Grange with financial support from your town budget. An amount of two hundred and fifty is suggested, but any amount will be appreciated and used wisely. So, um, I do know that we have a policy with regard to any, um, any, um, nonprofit. Um, and, and I, at this point, it'd be a nice to sort of revisit with regard to that, why we did that as far, and Patrick, you weren't here when we did this. Um, this time of year, we used to get letters like this, ten, fifteen letters from all different wonderful organizations, nonprofits. And for I, we felt as a board that for us to sit and decide, oh yeah, they should get this, and the Sanginville Historical Society should get this, and the food bank should get this, that it would be better to save the, again, looking at the mill rate, to save the taxpayers that our decision of where this charitable giving should be, that we're deciding to give it to, and let the taxpayer say, oh, I like the Valley Grange, oh, I go there and knit every Thursday night. I wanna give my five dollars that would have been in my taxes to that. And so we, across the board, made a policy that know, that we don't give any money to nonprofits, or, or any requests.
Nope.
Um, it, it doesn't need to be a nonprofit.
Nope, it's really
Well, then the tax dollars are being used for
Right, right. It's not us, you know, vetting these and ma, again, how can we vet all those things? So it's, it's just making a, across the board decision, made it way easier for us, and it allows our citizens to put their money where they want.
And some of these requests can be pretty political or divisive.
Yes.
You, there might be a cause that the three of us love, but
Right.
other people would find it not very attractive.
Insulting, yeah.
Right, right.
So we just stay right out of it.
Right. Right, you know
So anyway, that's what we do.
The local gun club, you know, whatever, maybe, you know, it's just, doesn't, we, we, we decided that, we're gonna try and keep it.
So that's a, a segue to the next thing that's not on here that I did yesterday and met with Civic Plus, which is the platform for municipal websites.
Oh.
Uh, and they gave me kind of a run-through, and, and I, I really just wanted to reach out with them and see what the opportunities were, and see where we, you know, what could we have, what, you know, they gave me, um, a, a, uh, price, a, a rundown for a yearly cost. Uh, it looks like, uh, bare bones, um, one-time fee, we manage everything as eight hundred and fifty dollars a year, and then
Do you know another town that's using them?
I do, uh, almost all of them.
Dover?
I don't know if Dover does, I know
The only reason why I'm saying this, I don't know if you've been on Dover's, but if you go on Dover's, and I know other, it's not just Dover, they're using a service, but you can go in on a Dover's tax card side, and it's actually a topo map of the town
Yeah.
with all the roads, and you just kind of point, oh, what is that piece of property?
And that's what they can do for us and stuff like
So I'm wondering if it's
It's, Civic Plus is the largest municipal platform, but, you know, they offer the biggest
They have a website of them, they're on.
They do, it's, it's
Shoreland zoning, everything is on.
I know, like
It's fast, you can dig into it.
So I know, you know, your Ellsworth and, and some of those, they all use it, and some of your smaller towns, they do use it. And you can kind of cherry pick the basic, you know, so a, a yearly one for premium design, uh, for, they host and support and everything is thirty-seven hundred dollars for the year. Uh,
That's premium design.
And they can, they can do another, they'll do another, like, if we wanted to set Zoom up, they'll do a Zoom call and they'll walk through all of the stuff, and, you know, we can put the scheduling on their schedules, and all that stuff, stuff that you're talking about. And then in the future, they can, you can keep adding, they have a bundle thing, but bare bones, um, that's what we got. And I, I liked what they had, I've seen a multiple of their websites from different towns, um
We should find out with that.
Yeah, I'm telling, that's just such a neat feature, because once, you know, you can, it isn't about, oh, what's that tax number? You know what I mean?
Oh, that's so
You look at a road, it's like, oh, it's about here, click, and the pictures pop up instantly, oh, no, it's not that house, boom, it's the next one.
So I asked them about even, you know, is there a way we can build in re-registration with, every year, you know, so people that are gonna re-register their cars, they can just go through the website, and he's, you know, absolutely, that's, that's simple thing. Um, and then to pull all of our stuff from the legacy system over, that would be part of the migration, so all the old notes, minutes, and everything would get migrated onto the new platform, um, so people would still be able to go back and it wouldn't be, it would still be a repository, we would lose all that stuff.
Hmm.
Um, so I can set something up for us to look at again, um, he's more than willing.
I, I could, I did a fair amount of research in this whole fire thing that we're, so I was going lots of different websites, and we're really not that bad.
The only piece that, honestly, the only piece that I really, and I think it's a value, is
Real estate.
that tax card piece.
Yeah, it would be a nice feature.
I don't know what it would cost.
Cause I wasn't specifically looking for that, so I don't know how many websites had it.
Right, yeah.
But just in terms of the, the access to information and all documents.
I agree with you, because I've been doing
I, it isn't horrible.
No, some of them
And some are unbelievably bad.
Terrible, I know.
And Sam does a, a great job at, you know, working it and updating, putting things on and trying to communicate.
How rapid we get our stuff up is really pretty impressive compared to some places I'm looking at.
I know some towns are six-month backlog on just
Years. I'm looking, trying to get town reports, cause I just wanna look at their budget, and they're, they're two, three years behind.
Yeah, or they just have one, a one-off.
Yeah, twenty nineteen.
Yeah, exactly. It's very frustrating when you're trying to do research, but I agree with you, the real estate thing, and I do think that's, you know, when people are looking at an area to buy in, or
You know what, it's nice if you live here to use it too, because all your shoreland zoning stuff is in there as well, but that was where I really, that's how I found it originally, was my daughter was looking for a house.
In Dover, yeah.
In Dover, and it was such a nice tool to be able to use.
Yeah.
And I asked him about Lincoln, you know, like, property taxes and being able to pay them and stuff, and he said that there's, there's a platform for to, to be able to do all of that stuff too, so I did
I mean, some of this stuff saves you a lot of labor.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, there's an expense maybe to adding it.
Right.
But every registration online is one the ladies don't have to handle.
You bet.
Well, and that's just it, if we could streamline their paperwork here, or by saying move more to them, this might be a better way to help offset that, free up some time, so that it does give them the more time, so.
Dover, I, I used to do everything online, registration, every registration was all online.
If it were available, I would.
Yes, same here.
Yeah.
Well, I, you know, I just, I, I know a while back, Dale had said something about upgrades on IT stuff, and then I came across this, and I had seen a couple of their products, and then I reached out last week, and they, we had a meeting yesterday on Zoom about, you know, the opportunity, so I can just, I'll just keep in touch with them, and then we can just keep building it and seeing what we can and can't do, and and see what happens, but I was expecting a lot more, and when they gave me that, I was like
The problem is now, though, is a lot of this stuff, there's so many, so much software out there, and there's so many at-home
Yeah.
icon computer geeks.
Oh yeah.
You know what I mean, that just are into all of this, so ten years ago, that would have been a crazy number, but today, the way, you know, everybody's on the website.
Right.
It's not like it's, it's not new anymore, it's not a
What is it called, Civic Plus?
Yeah, yeah, and I can make out the copies and then bring more stuff that they have, but, and I can e-mail you stuff, but, I just wanted to bring the price tag.
That's good, I like that, I think that it's worth looking into.
It's an option.
Yeah, yeah, it is, very much so.
Uh, anything else, or just roads?
Uh, uh, well, we'll get to select concerns, I guess, after roads and salt.
So, I did a ride today, and our dirt roads are softening, and they're gonna be horrible come Saturday, Sunday, they're
Yeah, like in the forties and rain.
I was wondering about, you have to be posting them.
Uh, whole hell, yeah, and I'm wondering if we need to do something, uh, and, and get Chris and Orin and, and myself to go put some signs up. We got some heavy loads limited signs and posting signs.
I think it's, yeah.
It's always good to air, oh, the conservative side.
I would not be surprised if other towns are gonna be posting the roads before the end of the week.
Uh, the frost is coming out.
Yeah, there is no frost.
Yeah, that
There really isn't.
That's
I had a tree there on my That lousy little eight inches of snow?
Yeah.
I couldn't even pile that off without ripping up my lawn.
Wow.
There's nothing under, even, like I said, just the base.
No, I think you, for sure, should be posting roads.
Yeah, okay, that, that'll be on the to-do tomorrow, to get posted, uh, I just wanted to make sure that we were on the same page on that.
For sure.
Uh, and then, I'll make sure that, uh, I'd budget for Uh, and then I'll make sure that, uh, I budget for the salt and sand, and then start making contacts and seeing if we get the same people to deliver that we did la- this past year, so it's ready come after budget. Once we pass the budget, I'll do it.
Knock on wood, but I piled this really good for this.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you never know.
Second half goes a lot quicker than the first half.
But I mean, when you look at the next week or two's forecast
No, it's true, all of a sudden, you can see March, yeah, and even, it doesn't matter how brutal March is, once you're in March, you made it.
And that last load of salt that New England dropped off, Chris, Chris said that's gonna be plenty for the rest of the
Yeah, I mean
That's good.
Yeah, so we, I'll go up there and look, and then we'll make a, you know, judgment on how much we really need and
Yep.
And then that'll be ready by summertime to, to have put up, so that coming into October, it's already done.
Yeah, good, we've always talked about that.
Yeah.
And
Who did we, who did we actually get seeing through this year?
Elements, is that?
The guy at Dover?
They were hauling out of, uh
But he's out of that.
Garland, the Garland pit?
It was good material, so, and we get a good price, so I'm, I'm gonna, that'll be the first one, and then the salt will be obviously New England. Because they have quick response for us, customer service is pretty good.
True. Selecting concerns, anything, anybody?
No.
The only thing I was, uh, thinking about, um, we, we had a meeting a while back, and Diane McCarthy Clark mentioned that artifact in the
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
And she admitted she didn't know exactly what it's worth, but she thought it was possible that it could be worth a great deal. I, and I don't think it's gonna be necessarily easy for you to figure out what that, but if you could start that process, it, if, I think if if it's what she, she was describing something that could be worth a lot of money, it would be good to know.
Yeah, it would be good to know.
Uh, you, if it's only worth a few thousand dollars, we should know that too.
Right, right.
So anyway, I just
I'm sure Diane would be
She'd be a good resource, or someone in that historical field.
Yep.
You know, museum people, right, you know, I don't know, but anyway, we did have, remember we had a it was like a reclaiming company that looks at
Yeah.
Old, old buildings, and they pull architecture out of it, like a staircase or a balcony, and he walked past it, and he didn't even notice it, so but that, maybe that wasn't his
Wasn't in his realm.
Field, yeah, so anyway, I just thought it's worth
That's a good point.
Speaking of that, have we, uh, have we had any remedy for the roof, or is it still leaking, or where do we stand on that?
It's not leaking.
We're gonna put it to the test this weekend.
Right.
Is it gonna rain again?
Yeah.
Oh.
So I was going through
Forty-five and rain, I think.
Oh, I don't know.
I didn't see the rain, I saw the forty-five.
Sunday.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, uh, and I, so yesterday, um, I was going through the rolodex to, you know, who, who do I call for commercial roofing, because it's not just a normal
I got a couple of numbers for it.
Yeah.
I had a nice conversation with Dennis Campbell, he seems like he's pretty knowledgeable.
So he and I are gonna meet tomorrow, and he's gonna see if he can get up the hatch to go look at
That's what he told me, yeah.
So
Awesome.
Yeah, he's
It's kind of sketchy up there.
Is it?
Well, I mean, you gotta go up a ladder up and through the hole, and you gotta go across, it's not like there's a
Catwalk.
A catwalk, you're gonna go across, and then think about it the other way, once you go across that catwalk, you're going right out over the balcony, so if you ever fell through that ceiling, you're going all the way down through, because
You're going two stories.
Yeah, because all that's there is a suspended ceiling, it's not like you're gonna
You might hit a poker table.
I mean, no disrespect for anybody, but I think really, you ought to have somebody up there with
This should be licensed and insured.
Licensed and insured.
Yeah.
Or sign the license.
I mean, going up and looking through the hole, up the ladder, I guess
He definitely has a professional background, whether he's still active, but he, at least the impression I got from talking to him, he knows his stop.
I still want to call somebody.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, oh, definitely.
No, and I, like I said, I've got a couple of numbers.
Shoot them and I'll call you tomorrow and Friday.
You guys have a lot of flaps.
Yeah.
Actually, I just got my quote today for Raymond, so I got some numbers I can send you, so.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Motion to adjourn, it's five oh eight.
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.